A wide angle is that? Does that put you in me in?
Pardon me?
The angle clearly, I'm sure.
Is that wide angle wide enough?
I think it is.
Okay, I want to grab the note.
You want to make sure you're in it?
I would go if I am.
Yeah.
Okay, everybody's ready, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Everyone will please rise for the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, the liberty, the justice, and my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And just for clarification, we do need to amend the agenda for the exec session, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, I need a motion to amend the agenda to add an executive session after reports.
Salute.
You need to state, or...
For personnel matter and...
Legal advice.
And legal advice, there we go.
Salute.
Second. Austin?
Aye.
Dottie?
Aye.
Grabber?
Aye.
Huber?
Aye.
Lucky?
Aye.
Okay. Now I need a motion to approve the agenda. Try not... Did that? I apologize.
Oh.
Um, yes I do, I need a motion to approve the agenda, I'm getting thrown off a little bit here.
It's a move.
That was second.
Alright.
Okay, Austin?
Aye.
Dottie?
Aye.
Grabber?
Aye.
Aye.
Huber?
Aye.
Lucky?
Aye.
Okay, we don't have a district community spotlight. We do not have a public comment. I need a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second. First, salute.
Second. Austin?
Aye.
Dottie?
Aye.
Grabber?
Aye.
Huber?
Aye.
Lucky?
Aye.
Okay, information items, we have an enrollment update.
Alright, what you have in front of you is something that, uh, let me finalize again, is I got down on the first and working with Tina and Brian and... And this is actually kind of in a state of flux. And, uh, because we're trying to figure out who's where, but Brian shared with us yesterday, we're down enough students, we're down about $700,000. Pretty accurate?
It's great, yeah, estimated.
Yeah, and so that's, uh, that's not anything we want, it's not unusual, as I've visited with other superintendents, but, uh, in the state and in the nation for that matter. But, uh, it's, uh, it's something that we're worried about, uh, one of our conversation pieces is that what we're seeing is, we've finally figured out, we think we know where everybody is, but there's a lot of them that are homeschooling that we're pretty sure are not homeschooling. And, uh, and that's, that's going, and that's happening also again, state and nationwide. My fear is we're gonna have a real bump in what's happening across, uh, across our, our district, in the state, and in the nation. Because especially as I worry about these K-three kids, and, uh, you know, that, that reading math base is huge. And then as I look at our high school kids, and be able to make what we do meaningful, to make sure that they're, they're engaged and wants to come, and, uh, sometimes it's, uh, it's difficult to do when you're virtual at times, and, uh, and in the situation we're in, we've had to adjust our calendars, so. This is, this is where we, uh, are sitting, that, that number still isn't quite final, but, uh, it'll be darn close.
Looks like the elementaries are pretty, pretty similar to where they were last year, aren't they? Are they close?
Uh, yeah, I think we expected a few more. We expected more.
Uh-huh.
And, uh, and so, you know, we, we're, you know, so we're not quite there.
So, uh, I'm sorry if I missed this, um, how many are we down from last year?
I don't have what you're looking at.
About 150.
I believe it's 156 or so.
Yeah.
And when you, um, look at what's estimated in funded pupils, what you're seeing there is head count. And remember, not every one of those is actually a funded pupil, and also remember, we're on a five-year averaging. So if you take what's estimated for funded pupils, it's kind of looking like about a 20, 20, 21 funded pupil count loss compared to what we started the year budgeted at. So now, I'm not comparing to last year, I'm comparing to, uh, where we thought we'd be.
Okay.
So it's, they're like our, our pre-K kids, not all those count. So, maybe that'll be on the ballot, if that's on the ballot, so maybe they'll add on whether they're funded, if they'll make some counts. So that'd be nice. Right, any questions? Trying to think.
Um, Steve?
Yep.
It's not an option to just not send a kid to school, right? At some point?
No, it isn't. You know what, I'm actually thinking about that, so we do our whole truancy thing. The thing is, is, uh, visiting a little bit with the county folks and what it, it's, uh, there are so many that, uh, it's kind of flooding that system. So, we're, we're not going to get probably the bang for a buck out of that truancy system. I'd like to tell you that we are, we're on it, we're on it. Who knows?
Because if I don't say my kid has to sign up with a school, or have to sign up with the state to show, here's what's happening with my kid?
Yeah, and so they may sign up, have their own, and then do nothing. Just like keep the kid on. Now, we have some wonderful, please know, we have some wonderful homeschool parents that are doing a beautiful job. That, uh, but we've got some of these newbies that are playing this game, and, uh, and we know it.
So when's the, is the people count official now, or are they extending the timeline?
Um, no, I don't know the timeline will change all that much, um, that's still in flux a little bit.
So there's time to get kids...
Well, you know, they're still counting, right, I mean, and then wrestling over who owns which, which head count. If you have, uh, kids that attended in two different districts during the window in some fashion. Usually it gets finalized right about first week of November. It's usually right before we start back into our meet for large circle. I'm almost, almost waiting, almost till the time we meet to get kind of that stamp of, here's our count.
Which will help us a lot going into November.
Any other questions?
It, it, to me, it's unusual, the state I came from, it was September 20th, and that's it, and, uh, whatever that was, so it's nice, at least that you're able to work back forth a little bit.
How long does it normally take, um, do you know, for the truancy system to actually catch up with the kids that aren't enrolled in, that aren't doing?
I've seen it go half a year.
Okay, and that's kind of what I thought.
Yeah.
Just, I wanted to confirm that.
And, and we're also dealing with situations where we have, uh, um, it, it's really tough if, if you're a special needs kid, and they all, they all come, even when we send everybody home to coworkers, we get our special needs kids in there. Um, we, we lost too much time last spring, so if you're a parent and that's fake, being able to have that kid there at school, and we know at home, nothing's happening, and they want to keep him at home, and that's not working, that's not happening, we're starting running a little bit of that. And, uh, and then John gets called and, and, uh, and we, we start playing with John, it makes for a great Christmas for John. But, uh, it's, uh, those are things that we really, there's little things like that that keep rearing their head, that we've really not had to deal with.
Any other questions? Alright. Board action items, we have a classified school employees week resolution. And I will read that, is whereas classified employees are an essential part of our education system, and whereas classified employees work with students, educators, parents, volunteers, business partners, and community members. And whereas classified employees support the smooth operation of offices, assist in classrooms, on school playgrounds, support the safety, cleanliness, and maintenance of buildings and property, safely transport students, prepare and serve nourishing meals, and provide a variety of other tasks on behalf of our students. And whereas the district depends upon the valuable services they provide to our students and to our community. And whereas classified employees with their diverse talents and dedication nurture students throughout their school years. Now, therefore be it resolved, the board of education of the Woodland Park School District proclaims the week of October 19th through the 23rd, 2020, as Classified School Employees Week in our school district, and we strongly encourage all members of our community to join in this observance, recognizing the dedication and hard work of these individuals. I need a motion to approve the Classified School Employees Week Resolution, Ashred.
Salute.
Next, I can't. Austin?
Aye.
Dottie?
Aye.
Grabber?
Aye.
Huber?
Aye.
Lucky?
Aye.
Okay, next thing on the resolution is the specific budget resolution number two.
So in your packets, you should have a copy of that specific budget resolution number two, and what we need to do is utilize reserves to replace the boiler at the high school. And when we, uh, passed the adopted budget back in June, we talked about, we were no longer allocating, at least for this year, with the current financial situation, dollars for big capital projects, with the exception of finishing the vestibule project. And since that project, though, pretty much finished, it's still technically open, uh, and we probably will come in far under budget with what we have allocated, uh, and it could cover this, I thought it probably best to just set this out by itself. Uh, so you can see, we're having to spend $26,145 to replace a boiler that's needed now at the high school, as we get ready for the month. So, this would come out of fund balance and add to, uh, right now, 1.7 million, 1,700,542 that was already allocated out of fund balance, making the total, uh, general fund, fund balance allocation, 1,726,687. Of course, that'll be revised in a few months.
Okay. Any questions?
Somebody forgot to fill the boiler with the budget?
Yeah. Exactly. And, and, you know, that's one of the things we actually talked about during the whole process, was, is we, we, other than stuff that was already on the menu that we had to finish up, signs, that kind of thing, um, we weren't going to have any other large ticket items, except to fix stuff that breaks, well, this is fixing stuff that breaks.
Yep.
Here's item number one.
Yes, and, and this breaks the last one, but, uh, the realist in me says we might hear from Brian again. There's probably, yeah.
Okay. So the specific budget resolution number two for fiscal year 2020, 2021, in accordance with CRS 2244105, Board of Education of Woodland Park School RE2 hereby authorizes the expenditures of fund balances for fiscal year 2020, 2021 in accordance with, to the following schedule, and it lists the Woodland Park High School boiler replacement, $26,145. And these expenditures are one-time only and will not lead to deficit spending, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Woodland Park School District, RE2, adopts this resolution to appropriate expenditures in the above referenced manner. I need a motion to approve the specific budget resolution number two.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Austin?
Aye.
Dottie?
Aye.
Grabber?
Aye.
Huber?
Aye.
Lucky?
Aye.
Okay, board reports.
Alright.
Superintendent report?
Yes.
Okay, good deal.
Sorry, yep.
Yep, okay, good deal. Um, you, you got through there, first of all, our, our staff leaders work so hard, when I think about these folks, it's, uh, the word grit comes to mind, if you've read any of Angela Duckworth's stuff, that's purpose, passion, and purpose bare, they're doing it, and they're, it is, it is not easy. And, uh, bring love to these people for what they're doing, and I never dreamed that they, they could do it as well as they have, and I'm not, I've never really dreamed that they'll, uh, especially Alabamity kids, would do as well as they are with masks, and, uh, and so it's, uh, it's really neat things, so some of these kids, they've been doing it now, guys, we're eight months into this thing, and they don't know any different, you know, masks are just kind of what we do, and they've all got their own cool mask, and, and taken it from there, none of them will trade me. And so, although I tried, I've been able to do, and so I'm just really proud of these folks, I can't wait to see faces again, though, get these things off, this is, this is really hard to read my, see, my eyes are laughing now. And, uh, and, yeah, occasionally I'll have an elementary kid look at me like, yeah, yeah, and, uh, make sure they, they know who it, who it is, so, yeah, that's good. Guys, we're really proud of Coach Joe Roscom, uh, being named the Denver Broncos Football Coach of the Week this week, um, you know, I had a chance to go down to the game. And, uh, and we, I had a little fun, I, I saw Nancy turned, turned in and, and, uh, whatever, during the, uh, I did a Facebook Live of the game. My, my camera skills are lacking, and, uh, occasionally I get excited, it's all over the place, and, uh, and if my camera skills weren't lacking, my announcer skills most definitely were lacking.
Yeah.
I might have had some fun with it, right?
That match day was awesome.
We had, we had a lot of fun with it, and, uh, and we will again. Um, our game this Friday is, uh, being, uh, put off to Saturday, we hope. Um, Elizabeth had, um, a lot of people, they had some of those symptoms, they all came back negative. They've got a key on now, and they need to find out tomorrow whether they come back negative or not. If they come back negative, we're good to go on Saturday at six o'clock, if they don't, that game, I don't know what we're doing. But, uh, but they, uh, yeah, we're really hoping to play. Um, I want to share one other little thing along those lines, uh, just about our coaches and kids. We, we had some seniors this year, love our seniors, but they got a little trouble this summer, and they missed the game. And, uh, so I run the sideline, talking to them, and how they handled themselves with that was just beautiful. It, you know, I did this, I'm paying my price, but we're gonna cheer them on and get ready to go. I watched, uh, one of our big linemen who was sitting, our starting left tackle. We had a junior quarterback who did a wonderful job stepping in for the guy who's going with the starter, and, and walking him up and down, his arm on him, just cheering him up and getting ready to go, and, and, uh, it was wonderful, and, uh, and we ended up winning the ballgame, and, uh, it was, uh, it was a really neat thing to see. But I love, number one, that we, we held the standard, and number two, we won, but number, but number three, watching them engage, even though they weren't on the field, they just put on, and, uh, just loved it, so. And you can see some of the upcoming dates, um, Bussy's board meeting, she, she signed with excitement, and, uh, and so that, that's happening at 5:30 on October 20th, um, the 23rd is the chamber dinner, and you know, I bet I can get some of you guys in if you want to go to the chamber dinner. And it's downtown, and, uh, because what, what has happened is we've had some businesses that don't allow their people to go because they don't want to lose them. Or they allow, okay, we'll send two, where they only send Peter ten. And, uh, they've already paid for it, but really goes, so if that's something you really like to do, I think I can work with Jeff and get that, that going, and, uh, that'll be a, a nice thing to, uh, to attend, so I'm, I'm looking forward to that. The 23rd, actually, I was thinking about driving out to the football game in Mount Mopet County, this is a really good reason not to drive to Mopet County. And then, so that's, that's cool beat, although I would just keep going to dinosaur. Um, work, work session on October 28th, I have an opportunity for us to get that together, I'm not sure what's the subject tonight, we'll take suggestions, and, uh, but we'll, we'll get it going. Uh, November 4th, we have our DAC meeting, it's gonna be virtual, and at 5:30. And, uh, so you got an invite, those of you on the DAC got an invite, our DAC has got an invite to that, and, uh, I think you got a message from, uh, Kelly, that, uh, you know, we were looking at a business person, and, uh, so, end up going with Carol, I think you guys know her, and, uh, and we'll have a pretty good grasp of what's supposed to be going, she's very excited to be able to jump back in. And the nice thing about it is DAC is every Wednesday, or two Wednesdays a month, so, you know, she's, she's good to go. Um, so looking forward to that. Um, November 5th is meeting confer, and November 11th, we turn around with a board meeting, um, again, and it's Veterans Day. Now, we won't be having our Veterans Day, um, ceremony for all the obvious reasons, but, uh, we'll try to still find a way to celebrate it like we did Patriots Day and those type of things. So, and, and like we did for Martin Luther King Jr. Day, and those things, so we'll, we'll keep that going. We're under phase three, low control right now, and we really wanted to go to phase four, but we weren't quite there, we had a little uptick, and, uh, so we did what was probably the right thing, and, uh, and get on with phase three, low control allows our kids to play together recess more, it allows our, um, more, you know, two, the whole fifth grade to get together, or whatever, to be able to do some things, and be able to eat lunch, uh, a little, it's different, so, so far it's worked pretty well. Uh, we have had, we're very fortunate that we've not made the paper, uh, the only one that makes the paper nowadays is me, and, uh, and so we, uh, um, with, with some of, we, we've quarantined some people, we've quarantined the teachers and students, and, and so we've, uh, um, um, we had that, but it worked well, they go home, they immediately start the learning, and they get back. And, uh, and that worked well, in fact, we had one where we quarantined a day, because all it turned out to be completely negative, and bring them right back in, a bunch of preschoolers, and, uh, so that worked out really well. Uh, so that quarantine, you know, we meet at, at two o'clock every day, um, usually Dale, Tina, and I, and, and, uh, not all of us, at least two of us, except for yesterday, there was one of us, because we got a meeting in here. Uh, we got to take care of, so, um, it, it's a, it's a good meeting with all the nurses, to be able to go through everything. Uh, guys, as I said, a football star, I've been proud of the effort, get a chance, you know, our cross-country kids, our softball kids, it, it, it's just a whole different animal in, in how they were able to do things. We had a golf banquet last night, golf kids, Nancy got to attend her last golf banquet as a parent, and, uh, yeah, and, uh, it was, uh, you know, I, I'm just really proud of everybody doing what they can to get kids engaged, because we're, when kids are not engaged, we lose them, we just, we just lose them, so, yeah. And there still isn't such a thing as free lunch, they extended our free lunch through the end of June, so, uh,
Wow.
Parents are just, yes, and, uh, you know, that's, that's a wonderful thing, uh, to be able to have happen, I don't know how long that'll continue, I think they'll just keep taking their, the parents call Brian, and Brian says, yeah, let's do it, and they just go, and, uh, that's pretty much, uh, yeah. Guys, any questions for me?
Excellent, thank you. Actually, I do have a question back in the football stuff, it might come up. So, I did read the newsletter, but I, and maybe I just missed it, but it appeared to me that not restricting the number of people that are going to attend the home football games...
Oh, hey, thank you for bringing that up, I meant to talk about that, and I, I, one of those things, yeah, we are restricted, and here's how we're doing. We're going in three different sections, the home section is pretty much just our parents. And then, when you figure 50 kids, and you figure the parents, it's pretty close to the 175 that we're allowed. And so that's where we are, you know, we, we issued bans and those type of things. The band will be on the north end, and, uh, we're borrowing some bleachers from the saddle club, and bringing them in, and they're gonna have, they're have their own separate entrance and porta potties. The parents will have their separate entrance, and we'll use the bathroom in here. The visitor's side will have to have their own entrance and exit, and, uh, that's where they'll be, and, uh, and so we won't have sections, um, although they did, down Alamosa. But, uh, they'll, you know, they, each of those sections can have up to 175, we have to have them blocked off, and they have to have them, uh, their own porta potties and their own separate entrance and exit.
So is it first come, first served at the door? It just gave a price of how much it was, but I don't think...
I, I don't know, and here's one of our problems, and, and is that our, our football game usually plays for not only football officials, but basketball officials, and stuff beyond that, we aren't gonna have that kind of game. And, uh, so that's another expense that we, we've run into, and, you know, it, it, it's definitely COVID-related, so we can do some things there, uh, it's, uh, but yeah, we, we do have restrictions, and, uh, yeah, and I'm not sure what, I know the parents get stuff, and I'm not sure what it is after that.
I can't give you the exact details, but I know they're working on an online ticket system, so, to prepay, and then have some sort of, uh, whether it's on your phone, or wristband, or whatever, that shows that you prepaid, um, and, and purchase your ticket ahead of time, so there's no cash exchange, and then, uh, but the allocations as far as how they're going out to parents, and parents of band kids, and parents of cheerleaders, I'm not sure on those.
Okay, and when is the first home game?
It was gonna be, uh, Friday, but it's moved to Saturday, we hope. We hope, you know, this is a pandemic thing, because you guys are, may have, or may not have read, there's been a lot of games canceled completely down the hill, and, uh, well, if I'm a senior, I'm dying. So it's, uh, you know, the more we can get into veteran, and we, and we got some pretty good kids, I knew this senior class was gonna be good, that's junior class. Guys, we, we got a new kid came in that was practicing kicking 60 yarders. And, uh, from Bulgaria, and, uh, that, that was freaky to watch, and, and, and we've had some kids really grow and step up, uh, they have a sophomore back, back there, if it's, uh, oh, about 5'10", 230, and, uh, just beautiful on both sides of the ball, it, it, it got, got me excited, I can't wait till the next game.
I'm assuming there's gonna be some communication coming out pretty quickly about the ticketing or something, or?
I don't, I don't, honestly, I don't know, I know we set up the system and then left away.
They may have just a bunch of people coming to the front door, and then being denied.
Yeah, but, yeah, well, we can't...
They're gonna be following around the woods.
Yeah, we, we've gotta do the, you know, throw the, the whole thing, so.
Okay. And that would just be something I follow up with, uh, with your alarm. With Kevin or whoever's in the retro.
Yep. Maybe the highest bidder, maybe we pay for a...
Yeah. Right there.
Yep. There you go. Okay, any other questions for, for Steve on the superintendent's report? Any board education report?
Actually, do have a little report.
Uh-huh.
And it's just basically informative, and then we can maybe talk about it, um, or if you get to your input. But in working with boosters, um, we had a sponsor approach us, um, and it was Jimmy Johns that wants to help out, and they, in particular, um, we talked a little bit about what they wanted to do, and they had free subway cards they wanted to give us, um, and they're also gonna be supporting the football team on the, on away games, giving them food, that's the boosters piece. But when we started talking, if you guys remember our conversation about wanting to do something for the teachers, maybe not monetary, but we wanted to do something. Um, so I, when I was talking to the gentleman, and he, we both, I kind of brought that up, he said, you know, my wife is a teacher, and so I get it, and I really would like to do that, actually. And so, um, I did get some counts from Brian, um, I'm gonna get one of you guys.
Right.
Yeah, um, 340 staff numbers, I think, or close to that.
Yeah, that's about right.
And when I gave him that number, he was like, oh, I can't do that, but, so he said, how about your high school, how many are in the high school, and so I think he came up with 81. So he is gonna be providing 81 free subway cards, so, um, they're gonna be good for like a whole year, he said they're not gonna expire, they're gonna say an expiration, but he said this will help you, they're not gonna expire. So, um, I just wanted to let you guys know that we have those, and I'm sorry it can't be for all our staff, um, but if we can do, I, I didn't know what you guys felt about that, um, we should just, can't give those to, um, I think Brian had the idea of just give them to Kevin, and if he's having a staff meeting, can hand them out, or, I don't, I don't know, people have ideas, but I just wanted to let you know, since we talked about that in our last work session of trying to do something, it's, we have those cards, so if we can get them out to, or if there's a better way to give them to different people, that's fine as well, but they'll be available to get out, so.
Next, Jimmy Johns?
Yeah. Then we're gonna put their sign out front, um, and then the boosters is gonna send it out to other sponsors as well, that have sponsored us in the past, and offer them, if they want to, um, provide a donation of some sort, or maybe... And offer them, if they want to, um, provide a donation of some sort, we're making it kind of Lucy-uzi this year, that will put their sign up as well, so. Uh, of course, we got Shining Mountain Golf Course, we'll get their sign up as well, and they've already done their sponsorship. Anyway, I guess we could table that, I just wanted to let you all know that we have that opportunity, and I just.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
If we could have that discussion, and, and we'll figure out how to, at, at our work session, I think that would be a good time to do it.
Okay.
It's just a couple weeks.
Okay.
Everybody good with that?
Yep.
All right, and thank you for letting us know, so we can think about all this, we really appreciate it. And, and since you were saying that, the one thing that I did want to make sure, um, and talk about, because, and, and we have, we've talked within our meeting, we've talked within our work sessions about how hard everyone in the district is working, and how resilient everybody's been, and how phenomenal we think that our, that everyone across the district, as far as the employees are doing. Um, so I just wanted to make sure and, and just make that statement and make that comment here, um, at the board meeting, uh, for anyone that's listening, I, you know, anytime I see a staff member, I do try to, um, let them know, hey, that the board as a whole, that's the one time I speak to the board as a whole, because I know we've talked about it, and said, you know, we really appreciate everything you're doing, and we know you're going above and beyond. And so I know I can only catch a couple, and I don't catch everybody, so I just wanted to make sure I said that here tonight. I didn't know if anyone else wanted to add to that.
Um, yeah, I mean, you know, I, I think that it's been a really tough time, and I'm very proud of, of how our school handles everything, and our staff, and I, I know it's not easy, I, I have Facebook, so I, I can see, um, some of the cries for help and out there, and, but, um, just doing an amazing job, so proud, probably part of this district, I think, I'm very impressed.
Just getting to see firsthand the juggling act between, relating to the kids in the class, relating to the kids on the screen, or whatever. Um, if, if the woo, if the juggling act are like, I need to see firsthand.
Yeah.
Despite the coronavirus.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm impressed not only with the staff and the faculty, but the students alike. Just their ability to flex and make adjustments personally, I think that's teaching a lot. Um, and it's, um, the students that I have spoken with, uh, they seem to be taking it in stride, and I know that's probably not speaking for all of the students, some are really having a difficult time. Um, and so I just wanted to encourage the students too, that I think their resilience is showing as well.
And we've had some good conversations over parent-teacher conferences too, and, you know, that's what, I mean, your kids are graduating, you don't get those wonderful conversations, but at least with the few teachers that I'm able to connect with, um, I, that's what we always try to leave with, is, you know, we understand these kids are in different places, and there are some things that they aren't able to do right now because of all the restrictions, but the teachers are taking it in stride, and the kids are, you know, doing what they can, and, and so, um, good to see.
Yeah, so thank you, it's definitely a huge shout out to everyone in the district, students and students and staff, the like. Um, so at this time, I need a motion for us to adjourn to executive session to discuss a personnel matter and legal advice pursuant to Colorado revised statute twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, four F and B.
So move. Austin?
Aye.
Dottie?
Aye.
Fraber?
Aye.
Huber?
Aye.
Lucky?
Aye.